All right, let's call this August 3rd meeting of the Rankin County Board of Supervisors to order. We'll start this meeting with invocation. I'm trying to think, let's just go with Slay this time. Mr. Slay, do you mind? I just let everybody pause for just a minute, you know? That's right.
Father, thank you for the opportunity that you give us to start our meetings like this, coming before you, acknowledging just how incredible and creative you are. The blessings that you give us, Lord, we don't deserve, they humble us. Father, I pray that you would use the blessings that you give, the skills, the abilities that you've given us. Father, could we use those for the betterment of our community? And help us, Lord, to think about the needs of our community, and to put others, Lord, to think more highly of them than we do of ourselves. Father, thank you for your word that gives us guidance and counsel. Father, I pray that everything we do here be in accordance with your will and your word. Father, thank you for the privilege of participating in government. Let us endeavor to take it for granted, for proudness in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. All right, calling the planning commission to order. Entertaining motion for approval and consideration of the June 29th minutes.
Some of them.
Got a move by Mr. Morrison, second by Mr. Morrow. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, the same sign. Motion passes. Old business.
So, we have two hearings that are scheduled for Monday. Do we need to review either one of those?
Anyone? District four and myself.
District four, we don't, I don't think we need to.
Yeah, I think I'm good as well, so.
All right, I will just say that those properties were both posted. We did receive several calls on number A, the Duvo Dozer and Dirt, but they were just inquiry calls, nobody was opposed. The second one, we didn't receive any calls on.
Okay, great. Item number four, new considerations.
All right, the first item is a rezoning request by Jason Keenan at Highway 18 and Rock Hill Road. Rankin County has joined this action, and these properties are located on Highway 18 at Rock Hill and Kirsch Road intersection there. This is our zoning map. The red area is on commercial C2. There was a large area of commercial zoning down there. And so, Mr. Keenan owns these two parcels right here. He has a home on that property, and so he's seeking to change that use, or the zoning from C2 to A1, to reflect the use of the property. The county has zoned the action to zone 10 other parcels on Highway 18 and Rock Hill Road from C2 to A1. The A zoning is more consistent with zoning of the surrounding properties in that area, and it's warranted because this area is agricultural in nature. So, this parcel on the corner of Kirsch and Highway 18 is going to remain commercial. And then, there are four properties on this side of Highway 18 and Kirsch Road that will remain commercial as well. Everything else shown in black will be changed to A1. We notified all of those property owners that the county was considering the change. I received a few calls, but there was nobody in opposition to the change. This is a view of Mr. Keenan's property on Highway 18. And these are properties on Rock Hill that will be changed from C2 to A1. And then, this is back out on 18. It adjoins the property on the corner there at Kirsch and Highway 18, that wooded area. It's also zone C2. It's going to go to A1 as well. And then, these are on the same side of 18 as Rock Hill, that'd be the west side. This parcel would be going back to A. All of these.
I make a motion, set that up for public hearing.
Got a motion by Mr. Morrow, set to public hearing. Second by Mr. Morrison. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Public hearing is set. Item B.
We're having technical difficulties. There we go. Oh, I'm sorry. This is the commercial property, the ones that will remain commercial, these pictures. Okay, the next item is a conditional use permit.
Hey, I think we may have skipped one, Ms. Renee.
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah.
If we go to item B, I think it was a 781 Hollywood.
Ms. Williams withdrew her application. She called yesterday and withdrew, so.
Okay, so we are good. 126 Rickles Lane?
Right, a conditional use permit for Richard Lindsey Jr. This property is located off of Highway 471. It's on the south side of Rickles Lane. It's a one-acre parcel, it's zoned RE1. Mr. Lindsey is seeking the conditional use permit to place a single-wide manufactured home on this property. He doesn't know a year model, because he wants to make sure he can be approved before he starts looking for a home. This Rickles Lane is a private road, and family members live on it. That's an aerial view of his lot, it's just a wooded lot. This is coming in on Rickles. This is his parents' property. And then, these are just other properties on Rickles. He's here if you have any questions for him.
How large is that lot?
1.06 acres.
Is there any, is, there's no dwelling on it now?
No, sir, it's wooded. It's just a wooded lot.
Give me a bigger view before that Rickles comes off 471.
Do you know where Marsman is?
Where?
Marsman Road, it's on the opposite side. And I think it's just before Magnolia. And at Magnolia, there's a cell tower, do you know? You know where that is?
I know where Magnolia is.
Okay.
As I said.
Okay. Got a motion by Mr. Gaines, set a public hearing.
Set.
No, I'm sorry, I'm not doing a public hearing, I'm sitting. Yeah, I am sitting in a public hearing, exactly right. Motion by Mr. Gaines, set a public hearing.
Set.
Second by Mr. Morrison. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, the like sign. Motion passes for a public hearing set. Item D.
Okay, the next item is a rezoning request for Sam Courtney on Bella Floor Drive. Bella Floor Drive is off of Highway 469, it's across from Magnolia Springs subdivision. It's a private drive. Mr. Courtney's seeking to rezone four parcels from RE1A to RE1. You know you can't sub, or develop property in the RE1A, so you have to seek to rezone. The parcels total 49.50 acres, they range in size from 9.75 to 20 acres. That's an aerial view of that property.
I make a motion, set the public hearing.
Got a motion by Mr. Morrison, second by Mr. Morrow. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, the like sign. Item E.
All right, it's a conditional use permit for Pamela Hervey on McCullough McLenn Road. This property is located on the south side of McCullough McLenn Road. It's a one-acre parcel, it's zoned A1. She's seeking the conditional use permit to construct a 3,990 square foot office building for her business, Compassionate Homemaker and Respite Care. That's an aerial view of the property. This is their site plan. You can see the placement of the building on the property there. They haven't gotten their drainage or grading plan in at this time, they want to make sure that they can be approved for this use before they, you know, spend, go to the expense of having that work done. In her application, she states that all the employees work out in field services, they don't work out of the office, and on a normal day, there would only be four to six people in the office. They don't have clients that come to the office. This is their floor plan. And then, this is the front elevation. It's going to be a wood frame building with a metal exterior. It's got beige in color with a brown roof, and it's got Stone Wayne Scott at the bottom. That's the side elevation, and then the rear.
Make a motion, set the public hearing.
Got a, got a motion by Mr. Morrow, set a public hearing. Second by Mr. Morrison. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, the like sign. Motion passes.
All right, the next item is a rezoning request by Jim Bro on Harold and J.C. Prestige Road. This is a, two large tracts of land that have frontage on Harold Road, J.C. Prestige Road, and Fairlane Drive. That shows the two parcels, they're 395 acres. It's an aerial view. They've divided this property into 18 lots. The minimum lot size is 10 acres, the majority of the lots are 20 acres or larger. He's proposing a heated and cooled square footage of 1,750 square feet, and a set of restrictive covenants was included in the application.
What?
This is a view of that property on J.C. Prestige, at the intersection there, J.C. Prestige and Harold Road. This is Fairlane Road, there'll be several lots on it.
Is this presently a county road? I saw on that draw, and it showed county road, Fairlane, but is that correct?
I'm not sure, that would be a question for Mr. Parker.
I don't, I'm certain.
If you go back on that, it said county road.
It does say that.
And then, the parents.
How they gonna access the back lots?
I don't, no, I don't.
That's another, I think where you see that dotted line would be another road.
Oh.
We're looking at this to rezone it, really?
We are, they'll have to seek to rezone, it's A now, and they're gonna, you can't develop in the A, so they'll be seeking RE1.
Okay, all we do is rezone it, they still have to access all that.
Sir?
I can find out right quick.
Okay. Well, it says, I say some of those are sold.
I see sold, my three.
Two at the top, yeah, three say sold, there's one that's got a pad in there, let's see, get through all the pictures. This is the Fairlane Road. This is adjoining property, these pictures, on J.C. Prestige.
Yep.
And then, this is back out to Harold.
We got a lot of ground to cover before we get to a subdividing this, that, I'm okay with setting it, but there's going to be a lot of things we have to cover before we get to the end of that, I mean, just the rezoning. The square footage, the roads, the access, I don't even know if they've got water approval in there now.
They have been in contact with the Water Association, Leesburg Water, and they'll have to provide that to Mr. Parker.
Yeah, they're, they're, I have to.
I know, but.
Apply that, but I.
They, they, I'm sure lots that's sold are on the water line, but those interior lots, I'm sure there's not water for those, just, from what I saw on there.
Yeah, I wouldn't, I wouldn't think so.
And what size lines and stuff.
Sure. And I had a discussion, this has been a good while back, on that map, can you go back to the map showing that road that's going down across there? Oh. And I can't even read that from here, but.
This, the private?
It's a private road, yes.
Where? I think those double dotted lines.
Yes, that's a private road, and it's going to have to be utilized for some access in there, and I discussed that with this guy, and it'd have to be brought up to county standards.
Yes, sir.
And he informed me pretty quick, he said, "No." He says, "What I'm gonna do is let whoever buys that lot, bring it up to county standards."
Hmm. They might have some different regulations than we do.
Yeah, yes, sir.
Okay, well, we just have to go over them when it time comes.
Right.
I thought Mr. Bro would be here today, but I don't see you.
Well, and it looks like the private, well, the private road goes right through the 40 acre.
See, there's five lots in there that really have no access.
I see.
Right now.
Let's not lose sight of what we're here for, we're just setting a public hearing, so let's kind of, we're gonna address these issues as we get down to the meeting, since he's not here.
Step one.
I don't care. We all recognize that's, that is a, that is on the way to becoming a subdivision. You cannot.
Well, there's three lots that's sold on that map right there.
And Renee mentioned one thing, we've got pads on.
Yeah, it's definitely out of the box, farther than it needs to be at this point, but the issue of rezoning simply sets up the very first, it gets us over the very first hurdle as to whether or not any of this will come to reality. You're not going to address the issue of necessarily within the context of the zoning unless you want to. The condition of the roads, the layout of the lots themselves, water lines, any drainage areas, that type of thing, that, that will all be a part of the development side after you decide whether or not you're even going to allow it to be rezoned.
I understand, but where they're sold, can they go ahead and be built, build homes there if it's not been rezoned?
The issue is that you've got three lots that have been subdivided out.
Three.
Which violates the subdivision rights.
You mean, there's three, though?
Yes, and I think that's, that's problematic as to whether or not we move forward with any permitting.
Okay, that's, that was what I was getting to, okay. All right.
All right, at this point, y'all guide me. Should we get things in order before we look at this as rezoning? Or should we address the rezoning while we're trying to get it in order?
Now, the one thing about going ahead and rezoning, Steve, I think to your point about addressing some of this, is that once it's rezoned, then it can be developed for subdivision purposes. I think there's enough of a, of a barrier for moving forward with that plan. Until y'all have had a chance to address it, that there would not be any harm in rezoning.
Is that what y'all feel?
I'm fine with rezoning, but I don't, I don't know if these, these three lots are sold, that's really my question, can they go ahead and start building, at least the third one? The two of them may handle it, can the third?
I think the answer, that needs to be no, because you've got the issue of multiple lots being served by, by means of a common point of access, that private road. It does not need.
These are on county road.
This is on county.
Harold Road is public.
They're on county road.
All right, I didn't see.
We realize that one is.
That is actually a county road on that.
Honestly, you can stop the third one from getting brick building permit. I mean, he's on a county road, Christian. I mean, only thing you can stop is 20, 30, 40, 34.
I didn't realize Harold Road was that size.
I got a problem, this is, you know the area better than either, it's growth, people want to move out in that area, good corner location, good area out there, I don't have a problem with the zoning request. I mean, it's up to you to tailor it to meet to what you want to do on the other thing. I think we just need to move forward and set the public hearing, discuss it all 30 days from now, or whenever that.
They're still not approving those lots, but necessarily be included within the context of a subdivision. So, by releasing those permits, you've got probably, what is that, a half a dozen lots that are supposed to be a part of the total subdivision activity, and how we got it. Those are going to essentially be dealt with in some of the maps.
If you can get on the front end and get it in control of all of the need restrictions and stuff, that'd be great, I think that's what they want to do, that's the intent, that's why he's here, as opposed to coming after he's got through selling all six lots, and then wants to involve the, you know, get their properties off, so. I think if we extend that audibly to some degree.
You want to set the public hearing?
I make a motion, we set the public hearing.
Got a motion, motion by Mr. Gaines, set the public hearing. Second by Mr. Morrison. Any more discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, the like sign. Our motion passes for a public hearing set. Item G. Ms. Renee.
All right, it's a conditional use permit for Gwendolyn Franklin at 3857 Highway 43 North. This property is located on the south side of Highway 43. It's a five-acre parcel, it's zoned RE1. This is an aerial view of that property, there's an existing manufactured home on the property now, it was hit by a tree during the storm. She wants to replace this one with a new single-wide home. She's applying for the conditional use under the hardship section, she has, she takes care of her elderly mother and a sister who are both in need of constant care. These are surrounding properties.
Okay, I'll make a motion myself to set the public hearing.
Set.
And second by Mr. Gaines, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, the like sign. Public hearing is set. Item, or section five, Ms. Renee.
Site plan.
Architectural review.
Yes, site plan, architectural review for Ricky Baber on Holly Bush Road. This property is located on the north side of Holly Bush. It's a one-acre parcel, it's zone C3. He's wanting to build a convenience store on this property, it's located right next to the storage facility. This is his site plan, you can see the location of the building on the property, he's going to have three gas pumps. That's his front elevation, the building's going to be entirely brick, it'll have some stucco, some split face block. This is his floor plan. And then, this is the color rendering of what the building will look like. Mr. Baber is here, if you have any questions for him. Now, he hasn't submitted his grading and drainage or his runoff calculations for Mr. Parker to review, he's getting those done, so if you want to approve it, it could be done contingent upon Mr. Parker's receipt and approval of those. These are views of those properties out there, this is central electric, the storage facility. This is the lot where the store will be built. This is the adjoining property to the east. This is across the street on the opposite side of Holly Bush, this is the entrance to Blackstone.
It's, is that straight across, or is that down? I think that's a little bit further to the east.
I think it is.
It's not straight across the road.
Yeah, and then, this property is further east as well.
Yep. This is, this property was part of the property that a year ago, we were looking at for a convenience store, but the other, they were needing to add some more property to have, and rezone it commercial, where this smaller store is sitting on a lot that's already zoned, right? I mean, it's already, the zoning is fine, and he's, they've re, I guess, configured their store and their size and made it fit to the size of the lot that they have. So, you know that there is probably going to be some opposition.
Yes, sir.
Okay, just so you know, I, I'm okay with us doing this contingent to the drainage plans being approved by Buster, and I think that that area's okay, but Buster, look at it closed, because you know how we are.
Yes, sir.
On that, especially down the road just a little bit on Holly Bush, as far as the runoff with the subdivisions across the road, too.
Right, yes, sir, I will.
All right, I'm.
Motion.
Official review.
No, no action.
Yes, yes, we need to approve it, if that's what you want.
So, motion by Mr. Gaines to approve?
Yep, contingent to the.
Grading and drainage.
Approval by Buster on the drainage.
Yep.
Got a motion by Mr. Gaines to approve.
Set.
Second by Mr. Morrison, any further discussion? All in favor, the like, the signify by saying aye. Any opposed, the like sign. Motion approved. Section six.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Slay.
Buck, you're up.
First item in section six is Mrs. Property Considerations. The first is the Edward Angela and Cody Smith Misses' property, 324 Hickory Ridge Road. This is reviewed, so at this time, we will open the public hearing on this matter last if there is anyone here to speak on the matter of the Edward Angela and Cody Smith Misses' property. Y'all come forward, please. Renee, if you would demonstrate.
Okay, in 2016, the Smiths were seeking a conditional use permit to place a manufactured home on this property on Hickory Ridge, Hickory Ridge Road. There were some conditions placed on it at that time, and one was that this old home on the property be torn down. They had requested that they be allowed to fix the home, repair it, and so they were given a timeline to get that done. Work had to be started by March 31st of 2016, or it had to be demolished. They did start some, a minimal, minimal amount of work, but these were pictures that were taken in December of 2015 of the home. All right, these are the new pictures that were taken on the first. That's the manufactured home that was placed on the property. And we.
Can you show, have you got any, are there any closer of the house now? You were pretty detailed in 15.
That's what we got.
What's inside of the lot?
Haven't been back on the property.
Oh.
They, they haven't called for any other inspections, not sure that they've moved for.
You want to step forward, please? State your name and address, please.
Yes, sir, Cody Smith, 324 Hickory Ridge Road. Since that time, we've done some mostly inside repairs, some rewiring, gutted it, and fixed the minor floorboard issues that's happened with the resin.
But we've not done any inspections on it?
No, sir.
Do you have a permit?
They, they did get a permit to do some work on the house, and they provided a scope of work to bring it up to code.
Okay, we're supposed to be doing inspections as you do these things.
We've been, we've been out there.
Mr. Jones, hell, they're not there.
But it wasn't to a point for inspection, it was to see the progress of it, but as far as it being ready for an inspection on electrical or framing, it was not at that stage.
My name is Angela Smith. We've had it since then rewired, we've had one room that has been sheet rocked, so, the flooring has been redone as well. So, since this renovation, we're, it's costing a little more than we expected, and it's taking a longer time, so we could cut some costs, but there is progress going on.
When, in the beginning, did we look at it and kind of give them, let them know what they had to do? Okay. Well, and I got another question, the, the travel freight on the side.
Sir?
Somebody living in it?
No.
I got a call that somebody was living in it.
No, sir.
No one is living there.
Okay, well, as well, we worked, I never met y'all face to face, you talked to me many times on the phone, and we helped, kind of, really helped you get the mobile home in there.
Right.
And glad to do that, and, and I'm, the, the, you know, you have a church straight across the road from you.
Yes, sir.
And they were very accommodating and very understanding. Huge crowd goes to church, as you know. Anyway, so they were, they really were wanting to, glad to help you and glad to go along with it, but one of their things was the old house.
I, I realize that, as you may, may be aware, my family sold the church, that property over there, so, we understand, you know, but it's taking, it's taking just a little bit longer than we expected.
I understand, I'm just saying, we need to move, that's the reason you're back in here, that, you know, some of them have called, some people, let me say, we got a call, what's going on with the house? I thought the deal was they were going to tear it down and fix it up.
That's the issue.
And so, so that's all I'm saying.
Yes.
You know, the way, the way they look at it, is we, we didn't fuss and protest and complain, and we're glad to try to help them get somewhere to live, and if I'm not mistaken, your, is it, who is it, your uncle or something that lives next door?
My nephew.
Your nephew, the one that's handicapped?
Yes.
All right, and I believe, if I understand right, in the beginning, you were moving there to kind of help watch him, take care of him?
That was.
To help him out, yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Well, now, but I noticed there's a fence put up between the two of you.
Yes, sir. Right, break down the communication.
Huh?
Break down the communication, he no longer wants to help.
Oh, okay, so that was one of the, okay, reasons to move in there. All right, I just need, because, and you got to understand, it's not me personally, I don't live far from you, but it's not me personally, I'm just going by what I'm being asked and what I was asked to do to help allow you to be in there, and now they're looking at me to say, "How come these things are not being done?" And so, that's, that's where I am. So, what I'm doing is just passing the word on from the people, the public, up and down the road that saw this, and there's others that have had same situations, and they've had to do certain conditions to be able to move something in, like a mobile home in, and they know they've had to abide by those restrictions. So, they're asking, "How come y'all are different?" So, I'm just saying, I want you to go ahead and continue work on it. So, I'm just saying, I want you to go ahead and continue work on it. But I think that we do need to go out there and let's just see how far along we are on there and get some. Do you have an idea? I mean, you got a long way to go. Do you have an idea, any kind of idea when this might happen? Because that's, because that's what's gonna be asked me.
Well, the, my main concern is the inside of the house getting that where it's livable, as opposed to the painting, you know, because, and that, that portion of it. And that's what we're working on.
But you won't be able, any occupancy until it's all finished?
Yeah, until we, until we get the electricity finally hooked up.
Well, I mean, until we inspect it and approve it. We're not gonna, you won't be able to have occupied until it's, it's finished.
Of course.
I mean, I'm gonna try to work with you to go ahead and keep, to do something, but we need to be moving on it. Because like I said, I'm having answer to everybody else that goes up to it. They're gonna say, I know you had a public hearing. What happened?
Mr. Morrison. As my wife and my son had said, you know, maybe you might not know it. My family have donated, have sold the land over across the road for the church to be built. They donated the land down to the old church before they moved away to down.
That was, that was a long, long time ago.
But is the building still there?
I'm, I'm born and raised two miles from you. I know, I know everything about that. Sorry.
And like she just said, we don't have the floor redeemed. Other than I had the liquor redeemed, had the plumbing redeemed. Mr. Has, Mr. Jones has come out to look at it. I know it might look bad from the outside, but like I said, it's caused money. We have been working on the house.
And I understand, and I'm, I'm fine. I'm working, trying to work with you. I understand the whole picture. It just, you got to understand from the other side, when people come by or, and, and people, a lot of the ones that attend the church and go there and travel that road, they don't know the history like you're saying. And honestly, they're not concerned about that. That's not affecting them. But what they need to see is some activity going on, and I think that would help.
I have a question.
Wild, bad Christian folks.
At the church. Now, what about the other, you know, there are some properties that are worse than that on the way to the church, on Hickory Ridge Road?
I'm just, wait a minute. Let me, but it's not just the church. I'm just saying, the, the people of the church could have come out and protested enough for you not to have even put your mobile home in there. If this room had filled up with fifty people, twenty-five people that protested, you probably wouldn't have gotten the permit to conditional use to put the mobile home in. And I contacted a lot of them myself that live around the area and they're very accommodating. And someone made, the only comment they made was, what are we gonna do with the old house?
And another reason we don't want to tear down the house is the original home state. And with that, you get, you know, benefits to property and taxes and things of that nature. So, that's why we're taking our time in getting it.
Well, we can, you know, I, I understand side, your side, I understand everybody. You've got to understand my side. And all I'm trying to say is let's continue some activity where people see something done. And honestly, and I'll be all fairness, when people go by there, they don't see any activity. They, so they think nothing's really been done. I mean, be, think about it on the other side. So, we just need some activity done. And I do appreciate you trying to keep things neat there at your place because like I said, there's a, I think Easter Sunday, two thousand people went to that church. And so, there's a lot of visibility, not just that, but that road's traveled heavily. And I'm gonna use that example because they know other properties around are having to be addressed by nuisance or by certain restrictions or guidelines that were put on them. And they see that they're going along with these others, so they question, how come this one's not? And, and so, the other properties you may be referring to on the road. If somebody complains about them, then they'll be addressed also.
Yes, sir.
Nobody's singling you out.
Yes, sir.
Speaking of that, the old T's property.
The what?
Can't even see the house.
Yeah. I, I know. If you want to make a complaint there, we'll certainly look into it.
We just want to be allowed to keep working at a pace that's, that we can afford to do. You know, there've been some medical issues that have come up. My husband is now having seizures. So, we, it's taking us a little bit longer than originally.
Just, I just like to need to see some activity and at some point, we will need to inspect it, obviously. So, we don't, we can't move in it till it's. Now, look, I mean, I'm trying to work with you and I, and you don't know it. I'm not, with the profile, I'm not probably a mile from you.
I know exactly what you said.
Okay. Well, and you know, I've been there a long time.
Yep.
So, I know the history of the place.
I know some of the Kenyans.
I don't know about that.
Yeah, I know.
Because I don't have any little around there.
But anyway.
I'd like to discuss that later then. But no, I mean, like I said, I'm trying to work with you. That's all I'm doing. And I'm just having to do part of the job that, this is part of that job that I do. On the other side, worked real hard to help get you in there. And I think, you know, I talked to you numerous times on the phone.
Really?
Right. And I know you had some problems and everything. So, anyways, we'll try, just try to work with me now to do what y'all, how you said you'd do.
Like I said, we are, we're still working, just a little bit at a time. You can't see it from the road.
Yeah, like I said, the outside might look like.
That's gonna be the last thing. Because the most important thing is getting it.
But we're working on it.
Well, can we, can we, can we just, we just table this or, and, but I would like some, for us to see just what it all has been done inside.
Oh, you're working, I'm having a look.
Yeah. At some point. So, I'm gonna, I'm gonna just table it and, and our, our people kind of monitor, watch it and see how you're doing.
Okay.
Keep us up to date. Like I said, I'm trying to work with you. I'm really not here to tell you bulldoze it down, but I'd like, would like some activity. And I tell you, it would go a long way and you're doing a pretty good job of it, just keep it neat around there and it won't draw attention. You know, I'm just trying to help you give some pointers.
I understand. I appreciate it.
All right.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Item B, do you need action on that, Mr. Slay? Or you, it was just the table motion?
We'll consider Jared's action to be a motion just to table, table the matter and set it off for some period of time. I would say maybe thirty days and take a look.
I just want to see some activity and I think maybe we will.
During that time, you think they might go out and just have a look, inspect it.
That's, that's what I.
You know, during the time it's taken.
Right. Not right, that's what I said. I want to go and look and see.
All right, so thirty days would be enough time for an inspection.
All right, so do I need a motion for that?
Jared's, he's making a motion.
Any second for the motion, Mr. Gaines. Motion by Mr. Morrison, second by Mr. Gaines. Any more discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, the light sign. Aye. Item B.
Next item is the Marshall Morrow nuisance property, one twenty McIntyre Lanes, District Four. We'll open that public hearing. We'll get Renee to demonstrate. And then if anyone's here on that matter, they can be approaching the podium.
All right. We've received complaints on a manufactured home that burned, I think sometime late last year. We've attempted to make contact with them. I don't think any of the mail has been received. But nothing's changed. They've not done anything to clean it up.
Windows burned?
Or remove it. Late in 2016.
Is there anyone here on the Marshall Morrow nuisance property consideration? Anyone? I don't see anyone here, so we'll close that public hearing. At this time, it'd be appropriate to take action on it.
I might motion, you said it.
All right, motion by Mr. Gaines. Declare the nuisance. All right.
Send it up to justice.
And second by Mr. Morrison. All in favor? Oh, I'm sorry. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion passed. Declare the nuisance. Item C, Mr. Slay.
This is the Jerry Harold nuisance property, five fifteen Ross Neil Road, District Four. We'll open that public hearing. Renee will demonstrate. If anyone's here on the Harold nuisance property matter, five fifteen Ross Neil, they can be making their way to the podium.
All right. We've received complaints. These pictures were dated September twenty-second of 2016 in regard to inoperable vehicles on the property, as well as rubbish and debris. Some of our certified mail was received. Nobody attempted to contact us. These pitch, well, same pictures. These are the new pictures dated August the first.
Is there anyone here on the Jerry Harold matter? I don't see anyone here. We'll close that public hearing. At this time, it'd be appropriate to take whatever action you guys feel is necessary.
Make a motion if we declare it nuisance.
Our motion by Mr. Gaines is declared a nuisance. Second by Mr. Morrison. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, the light sign. Motion passed. It's declared as a nuisance. Item E.
This will be the Jerry Rayner nuisance property, five twenty-two Ross Neil Road, District Four. Renee will demonstrate. If anyone's here on the Jerry Rayner nuisance matter, they can be making their way to the podium.
We received complaints on this property in regard to inoperable vehicles and rubbish and debris. These pictures were taken September twenty-second of 2016. Our mail was received and we had a call on this. And these are the new pictures. They have removed the vehicles.
Okay. Sir? Just introduce yourself to us.
Pardon?
Introduce yourself to us, please.
My name's Jerry Rayner.
Where do you live at, Mr. Rayner? Your address?
Five two-two Ross Neil Road.
All right.
I took, the, the vehicles that was there was my grandson's. I had him come get them. I don't know what else, what else was going on. As you can see, that, that bank is washing away. I'm trying to keep as much grass there as I can.
You, although, there were several, if I remember right, in, out in the pastures, out in the area around. Are all those gone? There was?
Yeah. All the, all the vehicles are gone.
There's no inoperable vehicles or?
The only thing sitting there is a travel trailer. And I got, of course, I got my tractor there and I've got a, a little trailer that I keep out there most of the time.
All right. I'm good.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Rayner, for coming.
Thank you, doing what you did. Thank you.
Thank you.
Wish it all the best.
All right. No action to be taken?
We'll close that public hearing and reflect, the minister will reflect no actions necessary.
Great. Item E, Mr. Slay.
Kenneth Matthews Estate, nuisance property, one forty-five Barefoot Springs Road. That's District Four. Renee will demonstrate for us. If anyone's here for the Kenneth Matthews Estate, then come forward.
All right. These pictures were taken September twenty-second of 2016 in regard to this abandoned mobile home, inoperable vehicles and rubbish and debris. These are the new pictures that were taken August the first. The abandoned mobile home has been removed. The eighteen-wheeler trailer is still there. And there's an inoperable vehicle in the front yard.
Good morning. If you would, introduce yourself to the board.
Delilah Matthews.
Okay. And your address?
One forty-five Barefoot Springs Road.
Great, thank you. Any comments or thoughts on this?
The truck, the pickup is sitting right there in front of the trailer. Was my husband's. He is, he's deceased. And there's been stuff continually piled on it. It will run, but it's gonna take a little effort. You know what I'm saying? My son, that's what's given to my son when my husband passed away. And eighteen-wheeler trailer has got stor, it was used for storage. When my husband closed his shop in Flowood, a friend of ours gave it to us to use for storage. And it's full of stuff. So, what I need to do.
Okay.
Like, where's it sit? Kind of off the road?
It's sitting where the abandoned, where the trailer that was sold. It's sitting right to the right of that.
I got you.
And that's my home.
Is it on the same side of the road as your home or on the other side?
Yes, sir. It's on the same side.
What else? What's around there?
Me.
You?
Me.
If you can get that truck and that stuff that's piled on top of that truck cleaned up and moved, I'll be okay.
You need the truck moved or just? The truck is tagged.
I mean, if the truck runs and all's fine.
It runs.
But I think it's piled, got a lot of trash.
It does.
It looks like, you can't only say the truck.
Oh, my God.
So, I mean, if the truck runs and used, I'm okay. But it didn't look like, when I saw it, that it had been used lately.
It hasn't.
And it looked more like it was a place just to put garbage. So, if you can clean that up.
I can get my son to do it.
I'll ask these guys if they'll go along with me to table it for a month, get that cleaned up and get that truck running and do, use it, something. If it runs, somebody wants to drive it.
Might want to, or not, but. Might want to explain that.
It's gotta be tagged.
It's tagged.
She said it was operable and tagged.
It's tagged.
So, operable, we, we identified that by way of the tagging itself. And needs to be some evidence of operability.
If we, just want you to clean it up and let's table it for a month. And if you get that cleaned up, the, the eighteen-wheeler trailer that's been used to storage, that's borderline, but I know out in the county, there's, you're not the only one that has one of those. That people use them as shops and storage and things like that.
That's how we'd be able to use it for.
But I think if it's just that eighteen-wheeler trailer, I can explain that away when I get a call.
Okay.
So, if you can clean, and you've done, I mean, y'all have done some stuff.
We've done a lot.
Yeah. Just get that pickup cleaned up.
That was my son's mobile home that was down there and he sold it. So, it's gone. But there does need to be some cleanup around it where it was.
All right. I'll make a motion. If you'll clean the rest of that little stuff up where the trailer was and that truck, we'll table this for a month. And at the end of that, if you've done those few little things, we're talking about a weekend, you know? Then we can make this go a while.
Okay.
All right. I'll make a motion. We table it for one month.
All right. Got a motion by Mr. Gaines for that. Second by Mr. Morrison. Any further discussion? Okay. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, the light sign. Mr. Slay, I may get ahead of you before you close that public meeting.
That's fine. Thank you for, we're closing it, just in case it didn't get closed.
Close with a motion then. All right. So, let's go to item F, please.
Item F, the Jerry Martin nuisance property, two thirty-five Rankin Hills Place, District Four. Renee will demonstrate. And anybody here for the Jerry Martin nuisance can come forward.
All right. We received complaints dating back to July of last year in regard to inoperable vehicles, rubbish and garbage, and then people living in campers on this property. These pictures were taken August twelfth of sixteen. And these are the new pictures that were taken August first.
All right, sir. Good morning. If you would, introduce yourself to us. Your address?
Two thirty-five Rankin Hills Place, Brandon.
Great. We'll give you your platform to speak.
Now, they don't even look like that now. Most vehicles I have put back in the driveway. All right. The Ford truck right there, that's my personal truck and that van is a camper. I don't drive them every day.
Uh, the Ford truck right there, that's my personal truck and that van is a camper. I don't drive them every day. You know, I, the Mountaineer is driven a lot. My white Monte Carlo sitting out there on the other end of the trailer, it's also driven a lot. So, if I need be to put like a, like a fence or something so you can't see it from the road, I can do that with no problem. What I eventually want to do is eventually get me a mobile home out there. And when I came out there two years ago, I said that from time to time I would be storing cars out there. At the same time, I get cars and I fix them and I give them away to people that needs cars. I've got two out there now that's supposed to be gone that I'm gonna donate to someone that needs a vehicle. I'm an evangelist. I do stuff to help people. You know, I'm not out there trying to be a nuisance to anybody. I don't drink, I don't do drugs. I do drive a tow truck for Rankin County towing. Sheriff here to tell you that I do stuff and I don't want to help him and the county, but anybody. Anybody that knows me will know I will do anything in the world I can to help you. But I'm not gonna hurt anybody and I will do what I need to do to make sure that I'm staying in compliance with Rankin County. I'm from Leake County, but I've been down here a long time. I want to stay in Rankin County. I love the people down here. And it all starts with this man right here that I think the world of.
Oh, everybody loves him.
And, you know, this county, the law, you know, you get in trouble here, you're going to jail. That's just the bottom line. I want to stay a resident of Rankin County. So, I'm willing to do, if I need to put a privacy fence down the side of my little barn where you can't see my truck and my camper, or whatever, I'm willing to do whatever I need to do to not be a nuisance. I am in a cul-de-sac. It's me, then Ed, then another guy, and then you have to go down about a hundred yards to the next neighbor. So, I will do whatever I need to do. But like I say, no, that, that blue Ford truck, I've had it since it was new. That camper, you know, it looked like a van, but I had a full blown camper, it's a one ton camper that I can use to pull my trailer with if I need be. So, no, I'm not trying to do nothing irregular. I know there's in the yard, but as if it's more, if you go out there and take pictures now, the Mountaineer and the other vehicle is in the driveway, the blue Honda, I don't see it on there. It's loaded on the record. It's going back to the place it belongs. So, yes, there are two more vehicles out there that are not mine that I'm gonna donate to somebody. I mean, people say, why don't you sell them? I said, why do I need to do that when I'm gonna do stuff to help people? I'd rather be known if somebody's gonna help somebody than to stab somebody in the back. So, y'all tell me what you want me to do and I will be more than happy to do it.
Steve?
Do you, do you live in that?
I stay there some, yes, sir.
Is it, what is the zoning on this, Renee?
R M X.
Sounds like a motorcycle to me, R M X.
It's a mixed district that would allow for a mobile home or a house.
Okay.
Uh, but you can't live in a camper.
But you what?
But you cannot live in a camper. You can't use it for a permanent dwelling.
Right. Um, I, all I can do is ask you for guidance and, uh, tell this guy what he's gotta do or can't, I mean, you got the regulations and, uh, I think we just should follow our regulations and if he's in compliance, he's in compliance. If he's not, tell him what he's gotta do to get in compliance.
Alright, well, you can't store inoperable vehicles on your property.
Everything, all that runs.
Okay, and you can't work, you can't work on them, uh, you know, out in the open for long periods of time unless you have an enclosed structure. Um, and as far as the camper goes, you know, you're not allowed to occupy that as a permanent dwelling. They're not designed for that use. I'm sorry.
I knew that also.
You knew that?
Yeah, that's what he said.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, I'm not, I'm not asking.
And you mentioned you were gonna get a trailer.
I'm eventually wanting to put me a mobile home out there.
Sure.
You know, I mean, when you, if you had some pictures from two years ago, that would look like a Ramada Inn compared to what it did back then. I mean, it was horrible. It was a tore down trailer. I mean, it, it took me about three or four weeks to even get it to, tore the ground. You could go on, but like I say, if I need to build a privacy fence, I'm more than happy to do that. Until I can get to where I can afford to get a mobile home out there. And see, most weekends, I'm not even around because I'm somewhere preaching. I read a driver tour bus for the Gospel Echoes.
Yes.
You know, just like I leave out Friday, I will get back to next Tuesday.
Yes, sir.
I know that.
What, what on the, what on the fence, Rayner?
What about a fence?
Mention, you mentioned?
That's what I say. I'd be glad to put a privacy fence up.
Good look, now, not, you know, a good looking one. I mean, uh.
Yeah, I mean, it'd be built right. It cost me a couple, probably a couple of thousand dollars to put a nice fence up. I'm not just gonna post something that's called a fence.
Well, yeah, I mean, we had somebody that, a couple of years ago, that the super board here before I was on, made a put a fence up in front of a junkyard and the darn fence looked worse than the junkyard. Cause they just went and got rough cut timber.
No, this'd be all new wood from Home Depot. I mean, it would be built, you know, one by six, eight feet tall, and then the four by fours to put in the ground.
How long would it take you to get a fence across the front?
With money being like it is, I'd probably need ninety days because, I mean, I'm just, I just got.
We table this for ninety days?
Yes, the fence will be up.
Can we come back in here and have pictures of the fence?
Yes, sir, I might even buy you lunch for you.
You don't have to do that. You don't have to do that.
Like, like I say, I want to do what's right.
I understand.
You said ninety days, so ninety days, let's table it, ninety days, and you get a good looking fence out there in front of that.
Okay, do I need to put it across, like, from the tree to the tree or further down toward the barn?
Outside out of mind.
As long as, as long as when you make that cul-de-sac, you know, you don't see the automobiles and things in there.
I can handle it.
Cosmetically.
It's fifty feet across and then I come down both sides, a hundred feet down both sides and everybody be happy.
Down both sides would be good.
Sir?
Probably fifty foot down each side would be enough, you know? Uh, you don't have to go to the back.
Yeah, I got like an acre and a half of land out there, so.
Yeah, yeah.
But like I say, I just want to.
It's gonna be your fence to maintain now. Just 'cause we're asking you to do this, don't mean we gonna come in there and paint it in two or three years.
Yeah.
Okay.
Hey, Steve, you know, he did say that he liked Rankin County, cause you mess up here, you go behind the bars. So, he said, I'll do whatever it takes y'all need, cause we want to stay on this side of the bar. I think that's where you're getting at.
Well, I'm talking about, like, I got.
I'm thinking with you, we're just.
Hey, we, we appreciate it.
I'm, I'm gonna make everybody happy.
Right.
Thank you.
You know, uh, Ed, that's a different story. That's the guy that lives next to me, you know, he's, he's out in Leftfield, then the guy across the road. I thought I'd go along good with everybody out there. So, but, you know, like I say, I can understand where you're coming from. I understand that this, you know, they are mobile homes, they are permanent houses out there, and initially, I will have a mobile home out there too. But right now, when you drive around, I mean, I'm not gonna deny anything on these pictures. I mean, I had to be stupid to come in here and say, well, that's not right. Which I know now some things have been moved, but like I say, I can explain to what's what. Everything out there does run and everything. And, you know, like I say, I do drive a record for Rankin County towing, and we do get a vehicle and I get some sometimes, cause I know somebody needs a vehicle and I buy them and fix them and I give them away. I've been doing that for about fourteen years now.
Well, Mr. Moore, thank you very much for coming in and explaining to us.
Uh, do I need to come back in ninety days or will y'all notify me in ninety days?
Uh, we'll, we'll probably inspect it within that period.
We will, if we notify you, then we're not happy with what happened.
I understand.
If you hear back from us, you'll come back.
So, no worries. No news is good news.
No news is good news.
Very good.
We would tickle that and make an inspection.
Sheriff's got a question back there.
Sheriff?
He doesn't told us diamond truck or break down. He didn't told us diamond, told us y'all. I appreciate that.
Oh, yeah, he has a lot of love.
I do a lot of stuff to help a lot of people. That's just, that's just who I am, you know, and, you know, even offer to buy, when they was having that storm here for first of the year, when everything froze down, I was gonna buy the coffin and everything else. He said he had that. That's just who I am.
That's it. Well, Mr. Moore, thank you for coming in, Mr. Moore. Appreciate it.
Nice to meet all y'all.
Alright, you too.
Mr. Slay, you need a motion or anything for that?
We will close the public hearing and Steve's motion will be to table for ninety days, allowing to bring the property into compliance.
Okay. Motion by Mr. Gaines. Board, I'll entertain the second. So, second, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, the same sign. Motion passes. Alright, um, the next meeting will be held on August thirty-first, nine A.M.
Make a motion recessed.
A motion to recess by Mr. Moore, second by Mr. Morrison. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, the like sign. Planning Commission is now closed. We're called to order the meeting of Rankin County Board Supervisors. We could just have another prayer to get us back going again, but we'll save that till next time again. Mr. Slay?
Yes, sir.
You're up.
Thank you. Gentlemen, we are in need of discussing an, an issue that has become really a more pressing issue in recent days especially. We've seen an increase in, uh, construction activity around the county. Uh, one area in particular that had been, uh, developed to a point, then had, had, development had stopped, is out in Castle Woods area. Uh, there's been some transition of some already developed lots or already platted lots within Castle Woods. And so, this has sort of been the driving force behind what we're here to talk about today, which is a, a consideration of how, if at all, this board would like to try to better protect county roads that are being damaged by large truck, whether it be dump trucks or log trucks or otherwise. And so, uh, the, the driving impetus behind it is a situation up in Castle Woods where a particular builder has been taking advantage of a situation, in my opinion, and has, uh, through, through the placement of the, of large equipment in that area, has damaged some of the roads in Castle Woods. And, uh, so we started looking at, how, how can we better protect these roads in situations like that? We don't have, to my knowledge, we don't have anything on the books at present that allows us to address it at a level that I think we need to have, as, as far as being able to be a little more, uh, aggressive with, especially with builders or dirt haulers who, um, may not be as interested as we think they ought to be in protecting our roads.
Sure.
So, that's sort of the driving force behind it. I reached out to, uh, one of our sister counties that has enacted an ordinance recently that I thought was, uh, an interesting way to go about this. Capua County, uh, several years ago, uh, entered into a ten million dollar bond issue and overlaid, uh, a significant number of their county roads. And because of the time, effort, energy and, and money, uh, that went into improving their county roads, they recognized that they needed to do something to try to protect that investment. And they had, obviously, they have a lot more logging and dump truck activity than, that, that we may have, uh, in terms of widespread around the county. And so, what they did was they passed an ordinance and are using state law in a number of ways to try to get on top of that. They have actually designated in their ordinance by supervisor district, county roads that are considered to be no truck roads. And then they define the trucks. Uh, I'll just quickly go through how they define their, how, how they define what is a truck. It is, um, a motor vehicle having more than two axles, which is designed to haul or carry, or which is used to haul or carry products or cargo for commercial purposes, and/or which is required to purchase a state issued motor vehicle license tag or a portion motor vehicle tag, including but not limited to a tractor trailer rig, an eighteen wheeler, gravel trucks, dump trucks, log trucks, delivery vans, pulpwood trucks, log motor vehicle, or any other such vehicle in addition to those names as having in excess of two axles. So, that's how they define a truck. And then they have gone through the trouble of by supervisor district actually identifying specific roads that are considered no truck roads. Then they have exceptions to what is allowed to use the road, even though it says no truck road. There are exceptions to it. And the exceptions, let me find that right quick. No person found guilty of operating a truck on the roads in violation, uh, is considered to be in violation of the ordinance if the operator is traveling upon the road for the purpose of making a delivery to a resident of the road upon which he or she is traveling, provided that such delivery is non-recurring and that the route does not involve more than one no truck load, or road, sorry. And so, they, they've got built in exceptions to no trucks. So, you may be thinking, well, what do we do about a situation like in Castle Woods where we, if we go in and we impress on, say, platted subdivision roads that are county roads? We just said no trucks there? How do we accommodate then, uh, construction activity? Cause we definitely want people to be able to build houses and such. Well, they are allowed to, to secure a permit. And at present, that's where there is a hole in how we try to protect, especially platted subdivision roads. It's not that they can't use the road, it's that they can't use it without a permit. We, we know that they're using it, and we can identify exactly which route they're gonna take, and we can evaluate what sort of damage do we expect, and we can require some type of protection, security, like a haul bond from that developer. Uh, and so, that's.
Or builder.
Or builder. And that's the methodology that, uh, certainly that Capua has decided to use. By having a, a specific ordinance where we can move forward, and I'm not suggesting, I'm just giving you the, the idea of what Capua's doing. They have designated specific county roads that are no truck, that would then require the seeking of a permit and the issuance of a haul bond. If there is a violation of that, if somebody's out there and they're running the, the roads, they're, uh, they're hauling on that road in violation of the ordinance, there are criminal penalties that are involved. And Capua actually has a deputy from the Sheriff's Department who is assigned to enforce this ordinance. A, a, an identified individual. That person is able to be on call when there is evidence out in the county somewhere. He can go and immediately take care of that issue. If he or she sees that activity ongoing in their presence, they can enforce the ordinance. At that point, they have arrest power and police power, uh, to be able to take care of that. It is a criminal ordinance in that respect. The fines that Capua uses is, uh, for any one violation, not, fine not more than one thousand dollars and sentenced to not more than six months in the county jail. So, it's pretty, uh, pretty effective in terms of, of, of that. So, I've, I've talked with Mike, I've talked with Mr. Buster about the situation that we find ourselves in. We recently had a meeting with, uh, a particular builder and, uh, we explained our dissatisfaction with how our roads in Castle Woods were being, uh, damaged. And we were essentially told, I don't think that I'm mischaracterizing how the conversation went, but we were essentially told, those are public roads and we're gonna use them, and if they get torn up, y'all can fix them.
What kind of equipment is he, I mean, you, you made a comment earlier that you thought it was, he was pushing it or what came in here? I don't want to paraphr-, I can paraphrase what you said. Well, what kind of equipment does he have out there that?
Mike may be better able to tell us.
That should not have been, any type of equipment should not have been out there that he had out there?
No, I mean, just dump trucks.
And logging trucks. He had to clear some land on that same side.
I won't go into the details, but I think we're talking about the same one. This is kind of an abnormality and I think it's a result of the, the, the economic situation we were in. Lots got developed, market went south, eventually the bank got it back. This particular builder went out and bought it by that time, or, or it already got built to a certain level, you know, and had been out there. I don't think we see this problem on an ongoing basis, because typically, we don't get a, a final wearing surface until, what, eighty percent, seventy-five, whatever?
That's right.
Somewhere in that neighborhood gets it, you know? I get the, the frustration level, but I'm just not, you know, what Capua County has suggested to do. The good thing, we're in the budget process, cause it may as well need about three more folks and sheriff's gonna need about five more folks, you know, just to handle this, this situation. And we can't legislate everything. And I, I, I appreciate the fact. We spent a one in a ton fixing roads. And we're, and we've addressed it to a larger degree in this new development ordinance. But I think this particular incident, y'all tell me if I'm wrong, does not happen that often, does it? Buster, have you ever, I mean, is that, I mean, I mean, it's gonna always get some of these roads tore up and dump trucks go in, even after you hit that eighty percent threshold. That's just the nature of the beast sometimes.
I got loggers right now tearing up roads, Bob, that, you know?
Yeah, it's.
It's, I mean, it's everyday deal, but, you know, it's, it's whatever we need to do, you know, it's just a suggestion.
And I realize what he's done. I don't know how long that development's been in place, like, ten, fifteen, twenty years, that road, how old is that road that he, that he, that he's been on?
Yeah, and, and, and I don't think all of the, the damage to the road was caused by him.
No.
But, 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 but a majority of it was. He, he came in down the main drag of Castle Woods, turned into Willow Subdivision and just destroyed all the roads.
And what, what can he do?
Well, and I guess for the same point is.
Pick up trucks?
No, I mean, not necessarily, but I think he needs to make the same understanding that, hey, when you come in and start tearing up our roads, you just got a free will to do it. I mean, there, there needs to be something on the builder to say, hey, look, if I'm gonna come in and do it, then I've gotta make the assistance on these roads to, to put them back to the same shape they were in. Um, it's, it's gonna cost us probably a million dollars to fix it.
I appreciate it. I know, it's not a million dollars. What about numbers gonna be?
I mean, how long the road is area?
Uh, the full stretch is probably.
Half mile. Probably half mile. It'd have to be totally reclaimed.
It won't be a million dollars.
But I get the cost. I really do, and I appreciate that. But I just don't know how you overcome, I don't know how you legislate this issue.
I don't either, because, uh, but, but I do know, uh, you know, we had this, potentially the same situation and it was on McCain Lane several years ago when they, they hauled all that timber out of there. Those guys sat down with, with us and said, and agreed to, let's go in there and get, you give us some, the high side of what it costs to rebuild it, cause we know we're gonna tear it up. And they were very accommodating and, and we did everything we need to do, put it down there, and as the Lord would have it, didn't crack a rock.
Didn't do any damage at all. And that would be, and that'd be the perfect scenario. But this same, and I guess my thing is this same builder, he's got several lots in an area where we just overlaid. And he's gonna come in and do the same exact thing, so the quarter of a million dollars we just spent there is fixing to be tore up.
Right.
And we've got no, uh, I don't wanna say actions to take against him or nothing to hold him responsible for what he's fixing to tear up. So, it, it's a, it's a bad situation we're in, but.
I don't know. I address it completely. I mean, I, I'm with you. I understand that.
We, we had the same deal. You remember Steve over there in, uh, in one of those deals off Andrew Chapel? Where they came in and they were, a, a guy was building his pad, dump trucks came in, destroyed the whole road. Remember that? Right there, Burt's all deals. Remember that?
It was, yeah.
They keep running there, so to do.
Tore the road up.
Bell Need or something like that in the back.
Backside of Mel.
Okay, so the same deal. They come in and they absolutely destroy the road that we've gone around and put the, the new asphalt in.
Is there a way we can address, I mean, the one we're talking about is acute. I mean, when you go out there and you, say you're tearing a road up in the police and you say, they don't matter, you fix it. and you say, they don't matter, you fix it, it's not my road, to our county people. I remember when this happened, and it's not even my district, it was so inflammatory that I'm just, you know, I'm going to tear it up and you going to fix it. Is there a way we can address this guy right now and then look down the road in the future?
Yeah, one idea that I've had that may help to address this particular issue, which is going to be a recurring issue where we have developments that are online but not finished. And then they come back online and there's several lots that need to be finished, which is what we're talking about here, is that you would simply apply your ordinance to platted subdivisions. If you do that, you are not addressing county roads outside of planted subdivisions, especially in the rural areas where you would expect there to be some significant blowback. For the most part, the planted subdivisions are going to be more tightly dense with residences and likely more individuals who would raise complaints about the condition of the road and more of a, of an understanding in the development side of this thing that you have to be more careful when you're inside of a residential subdivision with your activity, because you're going to impact more people.
I hate pictures of that dude.
He's got video, the whole thing, Mike does.
Let me put it on screen.
I don't think we do.
I don't think we do.
Can you put it up?
I don't think that's-
I don't think we're necessarily to have, I mean-
I'd like to see, I'd like to see how bad it was, because I got a phone call about how bad. And actually, he called me and he said what I need to do. And in his camp-
Who is he, the builder?
In his defense, he said, he was, he was very humbled when he talked to me. And I'm taking up, not taking up, just telling the truth, very humbled and said, I've never seen a road come apart like this one is. And I knew when he called and said, it's bad, it must be bad. He said, I'm having to try to blade it down every hour. It's just coming, it's just rolling to pieces. And I said, well, you've got a problem, but I'm going to have somebody come look at it. And he said, I'm giving you heads up, it's bad.
So did he notify us or did we?
He called.
Well, originally, originally, as soon as it starts happening, my phone explodes. And Mike was on top of it from the beginning.
Well, he called me and I said, I'm sure Daniel's already here.
The day of.
That was done during, that was video during the logging process.
And what he's, I heard my conversation was that only an inch and a half of asphalt in place is kind of in places. It was, I mean, some, I guess the question being, it was raised that maybe the road wasn't built initially to begin with, and it should have been.
This went back, how long, how long ago was this road big? I told, what I told him, I don't even know.
How old is this road?
Probably fifteen.
The subdivision spot right there is fifteen or more.
What was our building regs? This is a film, before it happened. They say it don't look that bad now, but it, it has got some, a lot of spot of cracks.
Two thousand, around two thousand, two thousand one.
It's probably going to predate zoning, but it won't predate our development regulations. It will, it will predate our current development, or what we call development orders, our subdivision regs, which were adopted in oh four. We had development regs such as it were prior to that, probably back to the mid nineties.
I think probably in two thousand, most of y'all are still working off about fourteen to sixteen inches of clay gravel, only the five inch sub base then too. I think back in the nineties, my family was still involved in that kind of stuff. We were facing those regs, you know, to build a road, so.
I mean, perhaps to address specifically this situation and others that are similar, where we, where we know we have existing planted subdivisions, where we still have some stock, some lot stock, you could consider applying an ordinance to your existing reservoir community district, which would pick up the platted subdivisions around the reservoir that are significantly impacted by this. Now, outside the RCD, you're not going to do anything.
I'd rather not, I'd rather if we do something, do it all, to all platted.
Yeah, they're all platted to me, because here's the thing, at the end of the day, if we can't have some kind of regulation at the beginning of this deal, and maybe it's to the point where we go in and evaluate and say, all right, look, we know we've got X amount of wear on this road, and we're going to take half the responsibility for it, but just come in and just freelance destroy our roads, and we've got to come back and put big money behind it to fix it, especially even after we've just totally come in and redone them. It's crazy.
Well, Daniel, this, this road, looking at this, this is similar to, if you ride, if you look through here, this road has showed a lot of wear. But on the other side, what I'm getting at is, we could do similar to what you're saying. We did this with the pipeline. They put, gave us a designated route, they filmed it, we filmed it. Then we came back and we hashed it out and they settled with this.
And that's what I'm saying, but this is almost going to be a case by case issue per home, per builder. Because he's got, he's got four or five other lots that are popping up over into an area we just totally put a brand new layer down on, that's fixing to get destroyed.
So what we're proposing, what we're discussing then, are we evolving then, Daniel, to a point where anybody gets a building permit up in the Willow Grands or Castle, isn't that the one that's still developing up there in the very north part or south part? And every time somebody builds a, pulls a building permit, we got to go out there and look at the road and see what damage the road is there? And then, and you got three different builders going at one time and three different, man, and way in the world you can venture that, and you're talking about a rebellion.
It's going to be, it's going to be a mess. So I mean, I don't know the right solution for it.
I don't either, it seems like this, they just got through over this, it's about a week.
That's a week overlay, somebody just throwing trees.
Well, how do you stop it?
I don't know.
And I guess, and I guess that's my question to Slay at that point, is this, how do you stop?
Is this the one where they even pile the logs up in our road?
That's a different guy.
Different guy, okay.
But it's the same thing continually.
All right, let's walk through, let's walk through how you would take some of what Kapaa's doing, which has testing behind it. They've been challenged on it, and it's stood the test, if I may put it that way. So what is being suggested is simply the installation, if y'all decide to go with just planted subdivisions, it would be Mike's responsibility to install no truck signs at strategic places to let folks know, no trucks. If there are trucks that are operating, then upon learning of that, there is an enforcement mechanism to shut that down and say, you will probably be able to do what you want to do in here, but you need to go see the road manager and get a permit to do it. And then the road manager will say, you can do what you need to do in here, but you need to follow this route to do it, and stay on this route to do it. And if you tear up any of the roads while you're doing it, we will be expecting you to effect repairs of that.
We can also say, though, we're going to, we're going to look at it and kind of depreciate it somewhat if these roads-
Right, there needs to be some reasonableness assigned to this. I think your road manager would have the ability to say, you know what, this road's already fifteen. It's probably time for an overlay on this particular section, have at it. Or he may say, we overlaid that six days ago. And if that's the only way to get to the activity where you're going to be moving trucks, it's going to cost you a haul bond to get it done. I expect you to provide a haul bond in the amount of whatever he comes up with to protect that route.
Let's talk realistically then, nobody's going to pay attention to that no truck sign. They don't think that sign's going to apply to them.
They don't pay us no attention.
They don't pay attention to it. Same man that posted truck signs all up, who was supposed to drive, ain't stopped an eighteen wheeler yet, you know?
The guy with the logs on Woodland right there, I called him and told him, kind of went off on him. He said, I got insurance, I ain't worried about it. Like I grew up in that bit.
And I don't know how you can, I get the frustration, I get our financial incentive, but I just don't know how you, getting such to a minute detail trying to solve the problem, that either we're going to have to hire a bunch of folks out there to monitor and oversee and do to try to save, I don't see how you do it.
Because so many of them come in and do it and gone for you, even though they're, him there.
But that is done. We are stepping up the enforcement on the development ordinance, the front end, which is helping no doubt, but I don't know how you do it, once the roads have been taken public.
I think that's the issue. Yeah, what do we, what do we do about the roads we're already responsible for? That's where we don't have enforcement mechanisms.
And the ordinance we get coming out, that's just basically development there, right? It's having to do with builder.
I, like you said, they're already-
Because the builder sells the lots, yeah. Where your problems are falling up, you know?
Another thing, you talk about platted subdivisions. If I remember, we went back, we looked at something, and we found out a lot of the subdivisions we have are not platted before they were platted.
Yes, sir.
You think they are, but-
Yep, that's a specific phraseology that would have a much more narrow application. It would not be everything that sort of looks like a subdivision. There's lots of bits and bounds subdivisions that are out there that are not platted as such. Sort of what we're, what I'm conceptualizing would be your true platted subdivision is where you would install the no truck signs. And, you know, Mike can, if you pass the ordinance and apply it just to the planted subdivisions, Mike can be strategic about where he starts that signage process.
What's going to happen to him in that same situation? And we may just say, okay, we'll just cut the check and redo it. But that entire area of the Woodlands that just got redone is fixing to get tore up. So we're going to go right back in there and spend, how much did that deal cost?
About seven more thousand.
No, it's almost a million for the Woodlands you're fixing to lose, because this guy's fixing to go in there to five or six lots that are in there and tear them up. As long as we don't care and we're willing to cut other agencies in the county to increase that road budget to fix them, we can do it. I guess that's, I don't know the answer.
You're, I mean, somebody goes, what scenario are you talking about now? I'm not talking about the other one, the, with the other building we're talking about. Is this another situation that's fixing to-
Same, same. Same guy, he's going to a different spot in Castle Woods.
Told us right here.
He's probably got fifteen lots.
He kind of, I guess one bank had this number of lots in inventory and he worked a deal with them and bought it and bought it, and now he's going to start, and it's just normal wear and tear of traffic, right? I mean, we're not doing anything excessive truck wise, are we, equipment wise?
Well, I mean, you got dump trucks and concrete trucks.
I know double tandems are heavier than the single tandem trucks and stuff like that, but I mean-
He's got whatever it takes to get in there.
My point is, if it's just the normal vehicles to go in and clean a lot and build it.
You got log trucks.
I mean, we're going, we're going to add expense on him, but yet he can go out in this county road out here, on the one you're talking about, the shale oil, that you family bought, those three or four lots, they going to get shale oil, pretty hard with dump trucks and stuff like that? Well, group fuck you're talking about. Same way, we're not going to penalize them though, because they're terrible.
They're not, because they're already logged.
Yeah, that's true. You're penalizing him, but you're not going to penalize somebody else that's maybe out in the county in that subdivision, doing so. And I don't think that's wrong. I appreciate trying to come up with a scenario, and I don't know how you do it, but I just think, and plus you're adding a good bit of expense on to that builder too, of what he's got incorporated into his lot, you know, and stuff, so.
I don't, I don't know how to do it, this, this is probably an extreme situation.
And it doesn't have to alter, I don't think.
Well, but, and I think what happens is, I think you've got in most of these subdivisions, I don't know how many, but I would assume, I can think of several subdivisions where we've got these empty lots that people are going to build on. And when they bring those concrete trucks in to pump and fill those pads, there's fixing to be the wear and tear on those streets. So in my mind, as long as we-
I mean, I'll back up to your question, Bob. I mean, I was thinking of shale oil road too, because I mean, it's just as easy to tear up shale oil roads as it is Castlewood Boulevard, you know? I mean, it costs just as much to do, or, you know, asphalt's asphalt.
And as long, as long as we sit here and understand that, especially going in this budget here, that our asphalt budget is not sufficient, because we're fixing to start refixing the stuff we just fixed. Then let's get into the budget side.
Well, the only thing you can do is, and I don't think it'd be that difficult, Sol is not here to ask the question, but I don't know, they have a mechanism, they can go in these planted subdivisions with the thing, determine what still are vacant lots and what's not. I mean, we don't have that much out there in inventory because of the demand that's going on. And then identify these subdivisions that still have, we've got the final wearing surface in place. However, there's still twenty lots left to be developed out there. I don't know if you can, someone will that remain triggered?
When you think about the subdivisions that's not really developed, but you think about the additional phases that are coming. I've got multiple subdivisions that has the original final wearing surface put down on that phase one. But to get to phase two, their route is through phase one, and to get through phase three, so.
I think we can, we can get them on the development ordinance, we can address that, those secondary phases that come online, Mr. Buster, through the development ordinance will be able to address tearing up prior phase road construction. But where we have the hole is this very situation where there is not a new phase. This is an existing phase that has already been taken.
Well, then, then if it's a limited, so limited number of lots, so to me, the ordinance wouldn't be as critical, because you're only going to affect the X number of lots that you have available to be worked on. I just know right now, the money we just spent, the three quarters of a million dollars fixing to get tore up, unless we stop it. Now, if we don't mind, I mean, if we don't mind.
I don't know how you, I, I have to say, I'm.
I mind terribly, terribly.
If we're requiring these developers, contractors, to build our roads in these new developments up to our standards and spend a hundred, a hundred fifty thousand dollars a mile to bring them up to that, and then we're not going to have any mechanism to stop a developer that comes in five years later and buys four or five lots and tears the same road up that we made the previous guy build from nothing, but this guy has no responsibility, then it just, I mean, I know I'm listening to Bob and how he enforced it and how much it's going to cost. I, I think that it's something we got to do, it's just we got to figure out how to do it.
Yes, the method, so.
So we're doing the same thing, we're running circles.
Yeah, right, yep. So, Slay, can you wrap this up again as far as a closing, final?
Yeah, so, and an idea, again, is to restate what's already on the table, but an idea would to limit the application to just to planted subdivisions. I think that helps to narrow the focus down to where really the problem issue is. To essentially to use a signage approach to it, no trucks, which would then trigger enforcement mechanisms that are available to you, a deputy or someone deputized within the road department, and then police and enforce that, okay? And that will put a stop to it, then route that user to the road manager to establish a specific route for the trucks to be hauling on. And the way to securitize that, in other words, to put a haul bond in place or a letter of credit or whatever other mechanism y'all want to come up with that serves to protect the county in the event the roads are damaged. We have, we have someone, other than just the builder, we have someone, a bond issuer or an issuer of the letter of credit to go to for the cost to repair the road.
So is it a possible thing to put up inside, even with Renee's office, that when you come in to get your permit as an individual builder, because it's not a developer right now, it's an individual builder, that he would come in, fill out his application process, the same side, get approval for the road manager on this route of mode of transportation to get in there? I mean, is that, is that the ordinance we need to put in place?
I don't envision us to be, I don't know that we would be able to address every single circumstance by moving it through community development on the permitting side. I think what's going to end up happening is, it's going to be as we discover that the road is being accessed in a no truck area. That's where you're going to get the enforcement side. I don't think Renee's going to be in a position to know how they're going to access that lot. Imagine you've got a planted subdivision online, but there's a way to get to the lots, not within the subdivision, but outside the subdivision. That's not a problem. So it's going to, just getting a lot online through the permit may not be the answer you needed as to whether or not that, there is a route and a haul bond required. We would need to know more than that. So you put your no truck signs up, and then you use the enforcement. And I suspect in a planted subdivision, once it gets out there in the public, that we are not going to allow these large dump trucks or concrete trucks inside an existing subdivision. We will have help with enforcement, people will call.
Which is what happened in this case.
Right, and so then that triggers back to Mike through the road manager to be able to address, where are you going to go, how are you going to get there? How many loads are you anticipating hauling? So that's a big consideration. So that's a big consideration, and set the amount of the permit and the haul bond commensurately.
How much timber are you gonna clear?
Well, I said, it's a good thing we're at a budget deadline.
All right, so what do you need today?
This is really just discussion?
Straight discussion.
Yeah, and I need some direction.
What do we do about the situation in front of you now?
I, I don't know how we can address it any other way than through a, an ordinance that is.
Okay, but an ordinance is kind of after the fact, this will be after, the ordinance will be after the fact.
Well, portions of it will be, because he's fixing to tear up the next section.
Yeah, I think that's what we're trying to get ahead of, Jared.
The, the issue what he's tore up now, we just bought. It's gonna be on us at a tune of probably half a million dollars. The flip side of this deal is the, the three quarters of a million dollars we just put down, he's fixing to tear that up. So do we just say, okay, no big deal, we'll just take that one point?
I think you got a little more, a little more understanding and ground on the parts that's just been redone, because he, as anyone else, can see this is a brand-new road. In his defense on this other one, he can see through the video, just like visually, that this is an old road, it's cracked, it's, needs some work anyway. Water, all this rain, water is, has gotten in it, so.
The meeting we had with him, he didn't display that. I mean, we sat there with Mr. Buster, I was in there along with Craig, that it's just tough deal, this is how your policies are set up, and I'm fixing to do these other lots, it's the same thing's gonna happen, and I'm not responsible for. Was how we left the meeting with him. So before we go down this route and totally destroy what we've already done, there needs to be something in check, or.
If, if, if he's expressed some level of reasonableness to you, Jared?
He did, and he called me, he was like, I'm just telling you, it's a mess, I'm doing what I can do, I know these people aren't happy. Quote words, I know they're not happy, uh, I'm trying to braid it back down every hour at times, see it needed, but hey, it's coming all to pieces.
Yes, sir.
And I said, well, I'm sure the supervisor out there is, is hearing about it, I'm gonna have the road manager look at it, and that's why.
My, my thought would be that there probably are ways to address it. Maybe he needs, he needs to use twice as many dump truck loads, uh, dump trucks as, as, as he is currently. He's hauling in way overweight for the condition of the road. So he, he would have to change the ways that he is operating his business to, to really address the issue without going the haul bond route. Okay, so if he's willing to use more dump trucks that are lighter, we may not be having this discussion.
Here, here's what I'd like to do, and just.
What's your case? He came.
I, I, I guess, I guess my thing, what I'd like to have here is, I, I would like to suggest you to draft this up in ordinance for Monday's meeting. We can take a vote on it on Monday, whether we adopt it or whether we not, but an ordinance around that same concept of what we just talked about, that would require him to come in, if there's no truck signs put up, he'd be on page with our road manager on what he's doing. We'd identify the, the rough status of the road currently before he begins. And then if, if Mike gives him clearance to go in and tear up whatever, and say, hey, we're, it's already tore up, go ahead and knock yourself out, we're gonna fix it anyway. Or in the case of a brand-new asphalt that what we have in the Woodlands is, at least we've established that this road's brand-new, and you go in there and tear it up, there's gotta be some, whether it's equal compensation, or split fee deal, or whatever, I don't care what it is, something needs to be established on the front side. So I'd like to have some ordinance at least to put in, to try to get a vote on, on Monday, uh, in regards to that. Because we're in a position where he's fixing to come in, and those roads are fixing to get tore up again, that we just spent a pile, a pile of money.
Can't you play the building permit with him on that next section? Can't you say, as a result of the damage that was done to this, in fact, we have overlay before we issue any permits, but we'll have this as opposed to us doing a knee-jerk reaction and adopting some ordinance that impacts all things before we give a little bit more thought to it, you know?
My, my concern is whether he's already got building permits.
For those locations, he does not?
He doesn't.
Not that we know of?
See, because what you're doing, what, the only problem I have, Daniel, where, where you're going is, this is gonna be an overhaul.
It's the two.
And I don't know, we've really dissected it enough.
Before we start, just to go in and adopt something, we're not competing by.
It's a bunch, no doubt.
But I mean, to go.
Right now, we would be trying to vote for it.
If we, if we had it, I mean, first, there's, there's like legislation where they pass something and that, they don't fund it. And then two or three years down the road, they have the money to fund it, and then they don't have it, uh, the employees to really carry it out if.
An unfunded mandate is what you're referring to, correct?
Well, I mean, if we were to vote on this, and it, I mean, we pass it, and we use it on extreme situations, because we hadn't implemented it totally, uh.
Selective, selective prosecution, prosecution here, what we're talking about?
I'm not saying we prosecute, we'll let the courts take care of that. We just identify the problems, and especially when they are saying, no, it's not my problem, it's your problem.
I think if, if you have a builder come in and get with our road guy, and say, hey, look, I'm fixing to come in here and do some work right here, and get on the same page with us, we're willing to work with whatever we need to work with. It's the rogue coming in that says, I tear it up and you fix it mentality that I don't like, so it, especially when we just.
It may not like it, but it's still a public road, and it's still a free country to some degree to do as you want to on a public road, I mean.
Hey, as long as we're willing to pay for it.
You know, you can't legislate everything, you can't solve everything with government, government's not here to do everything for us.
I, I, I agree with you, so, all right, that's, that's my, that's my suggestion for next week.
The concrete trucks are hauling on it, look up the road, I got a call about that, I think you went out and did, that they, we just asked them to reroute off of that, because they were, knowing they were tearing up, making that twisted turn.
That's correct.
Right, and, and if they did?
And I mean, and they, and they did, they did reroute.
They could have, they could have been.
But they very easily could have.
Before that, that.
Very easily could have told me, no, we're not gonna reroute.
We're not talking about half a mile.
Right, but, but his conversation with us was, I don't give a tear up, it's your responsibility.
Can you, Renee said he has not got building permits, like, do you think, we've got enough leverage in place that we could hold off the building permits until we come to some kind of agreement in this new section?
I, I was thinking to myself that, you know, perhaps some conversations about these additional building permits that have been requested, and how those relate to how we're gonna try to protect the road, the brand-new road that's there. I think that has merit, uh, but it's gonna all depend on how he responds to that.
Let's see how he responds.
Yep, so there needs to be communication about that, uh, and I'm comfortable with the approach. We're not really comfortable with issuing additional permits because of the situation with the road. Uh, I'm comfortable with that and getting word, and I don't, I don't know what that would, how that would be perceived on his side. I would hope that he'd wanna get an audience with you guys and just see if he could get it hammered out.
I just don't want to adopt something so quick, knee-jerk reaction, come up with something, we're gonna put it in place, and then try to figure out how we're gonna work it down the road. I'm not gonna do Obamacare with the roads.
That's exactly what I was thinking about.
Obamacare?
Yeah. We're gonna adopt it, then we're gonna figure it out. That's the only, that's my thing.
I think it's reverse, Obamacare is where I go to the hospital and everybody else pays for me. This is where the guy tears up the road.
And everybody else pays for it, that's right.
We're trying to stop the Obamacare.
That's right, before it gets started, so, that's what I'd like, and, and if I can get two other votes, then Monday, then we'll do it, if we can't, then we can't. But if you would drop me up in ordinance for that, so.
Yes, we can certainly have a prospective ordinance, uh, available for review. And perhaps between now and then, some communication can be had with the builder at issue, and see if he's willing to come and.
We brought him in here, we brought him in here and talked to him.
Well, I mean, Slay's got the right approach to this thing, the other us to sit there and try to legislate it out while on the front end indicates that we're not willing to talk. This is what it's gonna be, highway or no highway, that's it. I think with, with, he's not getting building permits, but he's saying, we can vote right now if we want to, if it gives you peace of mind, to say, Renee, you cannot give building permits for X number of lots and whatever phase subdivision, whatever, and, and cash to vote until this problem is worked out.
Can we do that legally?
We can do it, Dana.
I mean, can you do it, whether it's legal or not, I don't know.
That's the whole, whether or not it's authorized or appropriate.
By the time he decides to sue us and, and, and relieve it.
We'll have it figured out.
We'll have it figured out and solve the problem. We will have an ordinance in place, or we have worked out a deal with it. But if that gives you peace of mind, I'd be willing to do that come Monday as opposed to adopt this ordinance.
I think other than, instead of taking any sort of action in that respect, my suggestion would be that we simply.
Instruct her.
Alert Renee that we don't want any additional permits in, in that section of Castlewood until we have this addressed.
All right. All right, all clear? As mud?
But I'll go ahead and move forward with a prospective.
Do you not think he needs to, a conversation, or, or reach out one more time and say, I kinda feel like that?
Well, and again, it's not just this guy, I mean, there's other people that are gonna do the same thing.
We, we have a problem identifying who these people are, and I have no problem moving forward with this ordinance, I really don't. I just think we just need a bit more time and give more thought to it, how you gonna execute, how the sheriff's gonna adopt somebody, how Mike's gonna handle all this. If we keep throwing regs at Mike, we keep throwing applications, seeking permits at Mike to take care of, and do this, or do that, no wonder he's asking for additional personnel, he's gonna have to have.
Well, if you want to, I'd have a, a deputy just ride with him, or, or him.
He needs a bodyguard, what do you need?
That's what I'm saying.
Did compile have a, a person with the road or the sheriff's department?
Sheriff's department. They have a deputy assigned, um, at least.
They don't have care about the area and the miles, I mean, uh.
Well, theirs probably doesn't work full-time on that, where if we had one, he would work full-time on that.
And Bob, look, I'm for crafting it the right way. I'm just, I'm scared I'm at a point where it's just gonna get all tore up again, you know?
I think we stop it, he has not, I mean, we, I think the biggest thing is that, can you make the phone call?
Yes, sir.
You call him today and say, this is where the board is today, would you be available to come in Monday to, let's have a discussion and public, public comments about this situation? He's a reasonable guy, he does a lot of building in the county, he creates a lot of abhorment in the county, you know, he's somebody who's, you can talk to and work with, I believe. Uh, let's give it a shot and see. He, he may have a different attitude, you know, when you're sitting down across from the county's lawyer, county engineer, the supervisor, administrator, and stuff like that, and they go, phew, you know, you have a tendency to bow up, you know, I mean, because technically it's a public road, you know? So let's give them the opportunity to come in and chat with us before we, you know, uh, and if you choose just not to chat, then we'll take that for what it's worth and move on, you know, and address it.
Yes, sir.
All right, thank you, Mr. Slay.
Okay, that's all I, I think that's all I had.
That gets all of them. Ms. Laura?
Thank you. First item I have this morning is.
Speak up, Ms. Laura, I'm just kidding, I know you got laryngitis.
Yeah, and I won't tell you what he said about it, it was very unkind. Nomination of a committee to review and score the RFQs for energy performance contract. We open those tomorrow at ten o'clock. I believe we've sent out four packets, so I don't know how many will, but they have to be reviewed and scored, so we'll need four or five people to look over those.
Okay, that committee needs to come from where? Which body? You need supervisors, you need county employees?
Supervisors can participate in it, uh, Craig, myself, whoever y'all choose to put on there.
How many do you need? Five?
Four or five.
That type of voting? That type of.
Just to.
Odd man, dog, okay, so suggestions on that committee? Bishop, what do you think?
I think Bishop's a good guy, or I think.
Bishop usually does pretty good at that kind of stuff, you know?
Yep, he's a.
All right, so the committee can make up a Miss Oster. Mr. Slay, are you available for that?
Yes.
This is a non-paying committee now.
Yes, it is.
It's just a voluntary committee, is what we're looking for. Ms. Flood, what about you? There's voluntary committees, Larry, yeah? The voluntary committee.
We're collecting liquid taxes right now.
Ah, that's all right, that's right.
Well, Larry's probably not doing it anymore anyway, so he can probably come.
Larry should be free, that's all right.
Larry should pull in.
Oh, I don't have anything to do.
That's right.
Hey, that was recorded.
Do we need, uh, offer me up some more suggestions, Ms. Laura, as far as county employees that we have, that hopefully will be effective?
Since it has to do with the energy, that would be fine.
Well, that's five, but Larry'll do it.
We didn't get a commitment from Larry.
We didn't?
We got you down, do you know that?
All right, who else is on it?
Raymond better be glad he's out of town, sure.
Let me put him on.
Yeah, it's tomorrow's the only problem, I think he's still.
Yeah, and we don't, we won't necessarily do it tomorrow, we'll just take them, and then we'll just need some time to set up some review sheets.
Okay, so you, you got, you got, you got enough names down for that?
That's, that's good.
Okay, do you need, do you need a motion for that?
Do we have to have a motion for this?
It's a nomination, so I guess you go ahead and.
All right, so entertain a motion from the board, uh, for those committee members.
Uh, I have Jay, uh, myself, Craig Slay, Johnny Jones, and Larry.
Okay.
Make a motion to nominate those folks for the Energy Performance Contract Committee.
Great, got a motion from Mr. Morrow?
Second.
Second by Mr. Gaines, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, a light sign. Motion passes. Item B.
Thank you. The next item is authority to advertise for the positions of the ULC Director and an accounting clerk, number one, at the administration office.
Motion.
Okay, you got a motion by Mr. Gaines to advertise? Second by Mr. Morrow, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, a light sign. Great, review of the agendas, Ms. Oscar?
Y'all have any questions?
I thought I saw, did not, see Mr. Slay, your section, uh, development ordinance, we bring that back up for discussion on the seventh?
That is the public hearing.
I thought that was the fifteenth.
Okay, I wanna make one.
No, it's the seventh.
I was seeing.
Daniel, Daniel has a comment, he missed today.
Let me make one thing on that, I received a phone call this week from the Home Builders Association. Obviously, now they decided to read the ordinance, I think, a little bit more in depth, but got numerous comments that's come back from them, uh, and I've got them here, a packet for everybody to have. They were wanting some time to spend in discussion with the ordinance that's coming out there now. Obviously, some pushback from the Home Builders Association, um.
Waited kinda late, didn't they?
Yeah, I guess.
I kinda think so. If nothing else, I think they oughta pick up Buster's or Craig's staff for the, for the meeting.
Yeah, so, well, one of the things that they'd asked for was to sit down Mr. Buster and Alan, uh, and Craig, and even Mike, uh, early part next week, to discuss these. I got it written down here, I'll give them to you, uh, as far as to discuss their concerns with the new development ordinance on developers. So, uh, even though that's on the agenda for Monday, what I'd like to suggest we do, we push that off to, if it's possible, push it off to the fifteenth. Allow them to get their comments in prior to the meeting, then they can come back on the meeting on the fifteenth and discuss it in the public setting.
The only issues that we've noticed in the public hearing for the seventh, it's already been published, and you've got our.
All right, so.
They need to come here.
Work is, we can go ahead and have the public hearing and receive some comments.
Yeah.
You guys can, in the context of the public hearing, you can extend the comment period.
Okay.
And say, uh, you got an additional week, ten days.
Okay, we can do that, we can do that on Monday.
Right, we gotta go ahead.
Can they not come on Monday to discuss it before the board?
Um, I don't know, I mean, I'll ask them.
It's important to them, but.
I think they might as well, but make a plan on coming there.
That we, uh, open the public hearing, that we announce that you're intending to keep the public hearing and receive a comment period open.
Okay.
That triggers that you're not gonna be taking any action with that moment on, okay?
Right.
So you're gonna extend the comment period for however long, probably till some meeting in the future.
Okay.
And we will telegraph, we're going to vote on it after the close of the comment period, whatever date that is.
Okay.
You know, we have, I mean, they waited till the, to the last minute when we advertised this, they've been in here, some have been in here and everything.
Yeah, Weaver's been here, and you know, that folks come.
I'm not, we can listen to them, but I'm not in favor of just extending this very long.
Okay, I'll pass that over to them.
I mean, really, they were all in here, I mean, they had the opportunity like everybody else.
I'll, I'll be glad to tell them. So I guess, I'm, I'm gonna share other comments with everybody, we'll put that on there, and if they wanna show up Monday for the meeting, then we can figure out whether we wanna extend it on a vote, or we can vote on that point that day, so.
So how that would work is, you, you can either vote to keep the comment period, vote to have it open, or you could go ahead and vote to close it.
And we do that on the seventh, do that on the seventh, sure.
You don't have to vote on the seventh.
Right.
On here is potential action.
Right.
You don't have to vote.
Okay.
You could wait to vote until the fifteenth, that would give them an opportunity to visit with whomever.
Sure.
Between the seventh and fifteenth, if you wanna do that one, that's just an.
And you could vote on the fifteenth, gotcha. I'll pass that on to them, yeah, I will. Uh, perfect, so that, so we don't need to make any adjustments on the agenda for the apartment, okay?
Unless y'all know right now, if you don't, you are not going to vote on the seventh, we need to leave it like it is, because you could be voted on the seventh.
I think leave it like it is. I always leave an option open.
Well, I think if you leave it like it is.
You have the option.
They will come on in, then, if you just extend it, then they're gonna say, well, we're gonna wait.
Well, they're, they're coming in next week to meet regardless, I mean, I've got four pages of their comments all right here, so.
Bit slow to read it, because I know we sent it to them, didn't we?
Same thing I told them, yeah, they had it for at least sixty days.
By the way, we have receipts from where the Home Builders Association received us two months ago.
Sure. Yeah, it's been at least sixty days on there. Yeah, it's been at least 60 days on that same point, so I'm, I'm glad we have that. And I knew even Buster's agency was sending those out to the Home Builders Association, because we mentioned that numerous times in the meeting, be sure they have a copy of this thing as it goes down, so.
They have a vote Jackson and the Mississippi.
All right, anything else on the agendas discussion was, Steve? Uh, Jerry?
Um, I don't know.
Okay.
Well, the only thing I did, one thing I did see, we, uh, we got on consent, we got a, uh, something about a ad that's like to the, the Black Rose Theater, we don't, we, we pretty much have kind of tried to keep those two, um, school-related deals, kind of open up.
You want to vote it off, you take it off, and I'll send that email on to you.
I just want to take it off, have a discussion on it, and we decide then, everybody's who takes it off.
Okay, we'll move that off, Ms. Laura, Chance? Take it off, will I add that to them?
I'm self-aware to move it forward, you know, so, just FYI.
Okay, will I add that to the agenda for, uh, the 7th?
There was the letter about Mills, uh-
Milltown?
Yeah, take that off.
It's not in there.
Okay, okay, it's not on there.
That was just for God's-
Just for information, yeah, okay.
Yeah, absolutely, I'll get him on their additional business, just a second. Anything else on agendas? All right, great, we'll go into additional business, thank you, Ms. Oster. I want to recognize, uh, Mr. Brett Kelly in the back of Troop 300 on the Boy Scouts of America, so Brett, if you would, uh, step up, stand up just a second, if you don't mind. He's actually working on his citizenship and community merit badge, and man, I applaud your efforts on the Boy Scouts of America. One of the things I regret in my lifetime, I went back, I got all the way through the life merit badge, and I should have pursued on to my Eagle, but I got distracted in sports and other outside activities that I shouldn't let my mind probably go into, so, uh, but please continue on, we're proud of you, congratulations on your pursuit of this dream. What's your rank right now?
I'm a Life Scout.
Life Scout, that's where I got, right there, so I stalled out, so don't follow in my footsteps on that one. Continue on and drive on for that Eagle Scout. My dad was an Eagle Scout, and, uh, that's something that'll carry you a long way in life, having that on your resume, so drive on. Anything we can do to help you? Would your merit badge work? Any questions?
I pretty much got everything I needed.
Perfect.
Great, proud of you.
Thanks for attending, very much.
Deal.
All right.
I was an Eagle Scout.
Were you really?
Yeah, I was nearly there too, uh, tenderfoot.
I could have been like Bob, if I would have just drove all the harder, you know?
I was trial for.
That's right, that's right, some just make it, some of us don't, you know, so.
My son.
Okay, great, well, look, thanks Brett, very much for your hard work on that, so, all right, anything else, additional business needs to be brought up? I'll give it up, any executive session, Mr. Slay?